So I'd like to call to order the Longmont Housing Authority Order for this regular meeting this Tuesday, June thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-three at seven twenty-five. We have a rule call, please. I'll start with me, Joe Peck, Chair. Susie Lomond, Ferry, Commissioner. Marsha Martin, Commissioner.
Eric Robbikis, Commissioner.
Tim Morris, Commissioner.
Harold Almenos, Airman, Executive Director.
Sandra Daniels, Housing Secretary.
Molly O'Donnell, Housing Director.
Erin Carmar, Assistant Housing Assistant.
Sarah Ray, Building Safety.
Dee Salgall, Regional Manager.
Tom McCoy, Commissioner.
Tim Paul, Assistant City Attorney.
Okay, it's like we're all here. We need to review and approve the May sixteenth minutes. Can I have a motion?
I move we approve the minutes as presented.
Second. So that's been moved by, approval of the May sixteenth minutes has been moved by Commissioner McCoy, said by Commissioner Haddamal Ferry. We are now at public right to be heard.
We can vote.
Oh, let's vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed. So that passes unanimously. We're now at public right to be heard. Is there anybody from the public that would like to speak? Or Strider who wanted to speak?
Please now may speak.
Thank you, thank you.
Did you want to speak? Ask a question?
Yeah, well.
And your name?
Name is Stan Toll. And I'm having problems of being putting into a second-class citizenship because of the type of address I have. And some places are denying services and I don't really know who, if it's, they're saying the city is putting pressure on him to do this. And then some people in the city says, no, that's just a private group doing that. And it doesn't quite make sense to me. And so at the point right now, I'm just trying to figure out where exactly this is coming from and who's pressuring who. So anyway, that's where I'm at right there.
Okay, thank you, Stan. We're now at Old and New Business, Appointment of a Deputy Secretary.
Yeah, so I'll speak to that. So when we actually got into the closing element on Zinnia, based on some of the financing models, there was a point where they needed somebody to attest to my signature that it was actually me that had an office with the Housing Authority. And so the way that it's structured is that fortunately, the chair came in that day. And it was like, well, I know that the chair is going to be in, let's just set the signature line for the chair. But as we were moving to closing, had you not been coming in that day, it created an issue. So our proposal is to create a deputy secretary of the Housing Authority, which is Erica. And then in the sense where signing these documents, where somebody has to attest that it's me signing it, we can do it. We tried to say, well, why don't we just get a notary? Well, it's not a notary that you need in there. It's actually an officer of the organization. And so that's why we're putting this on, is to have Erica in that position so that she can attest to my signature and leave for the life of an office. We don't know why that's in play, but it was in play in that deal. Jim Z.
That's not a question.
Do we need a motion to do that? Do you have a question?
I do. Who's the secretary? You're the secretary.
You are?
I mean, yeah. Yeah. That's the way that, that's the way that it's always been created is that the executive director, my position is the secretary. And so instead of mangling everything to try to redo it, we thought that the easiest solution right now is to say we can create a deputy secretary.
I've just been around this for six years and didn't know you were the secretary.
Yeah.
I'm going to point here and let me ask the deputy secretary.
I have a question.
Yes.
Erica, you fine with that?
I already notarized the signature, so.
Good question. So that motion to nominate, no, to move that Erica be the deputy secretary has been moved by Commissioner Robbikis and seconded by Commissioner Martin. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed. That passes unanimously. Congratulations. So we have Resolution two thousand and twenty-three dash twenty, the ratification of the formation of Longmont Housing Authority Ventures LLC. Does anyone speak?
So Molly O'Donnell, Housing Director, I'll open up this item. If you recall back on the May twenty-first, the council meeting where you adjourned and opened up as the LHA board to make this special item go through, we created LHA Ventures LLC as a limited liability company for the partnerships in which we, from this point on and going forward, would be a special limited partner only, not necessarily in the co-development role or the ownership structure other than this special limited partner. The special limited partner role is really because we're a housing authority, affordable housing developers want us to come in in that ownership structure so that they can qualify for tax exemption and some benefits. And make sure the Housing Authority also has a network that is really the, you know, the center of the web of affordable housing in Longmont. So we ended up creating that late in the game on Zinnia at the advice of our special counsel, which Tim also was involved in and everyone agreed that this was a smart idea. On Chrisman two, back a year ago, we entered as an SLP as the LHA. And legal advice is telling us that if we create an LLC that is designated for that SLP relationship and use that on Zinnia and then future SLP-only relationships going forward, it would just reduce the LHA's liability when they're entering into those partnerships. Tim, do you have supplemental information for that?
Yeah, a couple things to add. One thing that's different about Chrisman and Zinnia, at Chrisman, we were more general partners in that deal.
That's right.
Whereas Zinnia, we were in that deal mostly for a special, special limited partnership. And so the negotiations kind of centered around at that point guarantees from somebody who was going to have actual assets protect us in case that some liability got to the LHA. And partnership wasn't willing to put somebody who actually had pockets to guarantee us. So adding an entity allowed us to give up some buffer space between any potential liability. Another thing to add is the Housing Authority law explicitly allows the Housing Authority, in one of the enumerated authorizations of the Housing Authority, you're allowed to create entities that are controlled and operated by the Housing Authority to act, invest as a partner in the partnerships and take any steps necessary to be in kind of otherwise develop a project. So the idea in the Housing Authority law was this, they, they, they set up the law so that we could do this. And then in the tax exemption, they explicitly allowed that tax exemption to flow through an entity that was wholly owned by the Housing Authority. And so the sole purpose will be to hold those special limited partnerships. So we're not going to put something that's real ownership stake in a, in a, in a property. It'll just be those point zero zero one percent, point zero one percent special limited partnerships that is just for the tax exemption for the project. And so we can use that on any project that we, that we have going forward. So it would be the same way.
Okay. So recall that there were questions potentially about the, the taxing status of the entity. Do you want to address those?
Sure, the, the entity is a limited liability company. I think there was questions last meeting about whether or not it was a nonprofit or, or a for-profit company. It is technically a for-profit company and not a nonprofit. That is the way those are always set up. That was the way it was set up as, on advice of our special counsel. I don't think it would actually qualify it for a, for a nonprofit status for what it does. But all it is is a pass-through entity. So for IRS purposes, it's a disregarded entity. And the money goes, so there is a fee for us entering a special limited partnership. That goes straight to the Housing Authority and then the ownership interest is held by the, by this company. This company doesn't actually receive any assets. And I think in all of the deals, there's no, like we did the last item, we probably didn't miss any.
So we're, we're a sole corporate member.
Sole member.
Which makes us the governing board of the LLC.
Yeah. Makes the Housing Authority the governing board. Yeah, exactly. It's a sole owner and member manager.
Okay, can I have a motion to move this resolution? So I'll move. Second, Resolution two thousand and twenty-three dash twenty is moved by Commissioner Mayor Martin, seconded by Commissioner Haddamal Ferry. All those in favor say aye. All opposed.
So remember this conversation because we're going to start building on this conversation related to the next few items that are coming forward.
Okay. Make sure that kids know. So now we're at Resolution two thousand and twenty-three dash twenty-one to approve the Atwood Commons Property Tax Exemption Partnership. That sounds promising.
So again, here Molly again, so we're going to be talking about a, an affordable housing project, a proposed affordable housing project that would not be owned by LHA. We, it would be more similar to the Zinnia setup where we are a special limited partner if this, if the board decides to do so. And then we'd be looking at being a third-party property manager. So this is very similar to the Zinnia setup. Atwood Commons is seventy-two, one and two-bedroom units that are proposed at the corner of Third and Atwood. So there's a, I think, a little gas in that there right now and then the rest of the land is paved or or dirt. So there's a long-time Longmont developer that's had an option to purchase that property. They were looking at market rental, market for sale, and then eventually wanted to enter the li-tech realm and see how, see how that goes. And also it is a good financing setup for this specific deal. So.
Part of that, you know, I think when the project initially came forward, there was a lot of consternation regarding parking and other issues. One of the things that we also know about affordable housing projects is that when you look at the parking, what we see in parking at all of our affordable housing is that it is lower than market rate. And so when our transportation, when our staff looked at parking at Chrisman one, which is very similar to this, it actually had, was parked at a much lower level than what we typically see at normal market rates. And so that was another piece that started making sense as we were just looking at the deal and the policy.
And this might be happening again, maybe to do another project as well. Where people are looking at converting to li-tech.
Molly, how many units did you?
Seventy-two, one and two bedrooms. And so they are pretty far through the entitlement process. They do plan on putting in for a tax credit application August first. And in order, they have to get some ducks in a row to get them to do that. One of those is proposing to you all a property tax exemption partnership. At this point, really what they need is just a commitment that we would enter into a partnership. In the past, what we would do is for Chrisman specifically is, is the model, we would bring forward a property tax exemption partnership concept with the fee built in and the, the fee is based on, you know, the affordability of the project and several factors. And then you would commit to that as a partnership. And then when we're preparing for closing, we would have, have an actual resolution outlining the entity entering the partnership. So usually that's what we would do. In this case, we are presenting it as a very conceptual commitment to a property tax exemption partnership that would be specific to following the policy in effect at the time that we are entering into the partnership. Meaning, they need a commitment for their August first tax credit deadline, but there are some changes happening in the world of income averaging that we're going to get into shortly that might affect our property tax exemption policy. And so we wanted to make sure it was flexible enough for you to decide later what the exact partnership would look like. It would still come back to you, but this is kind of an interim step to help them with their application needs.
I think in the pieces is if at the end of the day it doesn't work out, we don't have to do it. It's just letting them meet the requirements of the CHAFA application. And it's probably good to get into income averaging now. So the, the change condition, and I want to take you all back to Chrisman two when we started working that project. If you remember when we started working in Chrisman two, we were looking at income averaging. And what income averaging is, and this gets right, this is also related to the market study that you have to do and where the units fit and what it looks like. But the component behind income averaging, sorry, I want to make sure I build through this line by line. The premise behind income averaging is that what, right now, under typical affordable housing tax credit deals is really set at sixty percent AMI. And you try to get what you can, thirty, forty in that mix, but you can't go over sixty percent AMI. If you remember in Chrisman two, we were talking about the fact that the IRS is saying you can do income averaging, which meant you could go above sixty percent AMI, but you have to stay below eighty percent AMI.
And you got to balance things at forty or thirty?
Thirty, right. So you're getting to the, to the point of income averaging is that what you do is you use, you realize the higher incomes of, you know, in that sixty, seventy, seventy to eighty to really generate more in that twenty to thirty, thirty to forty, forty to fifty. So you get more down here, but you're offsetting that with the higher rents. Well, we didn't use it in Chrisman two because the IRS never came out with that, their guidelines. And so everyone was sitting there waiting to go, when are the guidelines coming out? Well, the guidelines have come out. And so now we're seeing people come in with that income averaging component to this. This will be the only conversation, the Hoover project, we're also looking at the same thing. And, and so there's some distinct, there's some differences in this. So when you look at income averaging, you think, well, seventy, eighty percent, that's really market rate units. Maybe, not really. I mean, it depends on what you're doing. But again, you're leveraging the, the rents here to get more of this. One of the distinctions is that if you're in one of the sixty to seventy, seventy to eighty percent AMI units, you still have to recertify your income every year. So unlike a traditional market rate where you just pay rent, that's it. In this case, you have to recertify every year just like you would in a forty percent AMI unit. So that's an additional burden that people who live in those units have to deal with. It is also a burden that lets you maintain the rent structures because the rent structures are always going to be in that range. It's not like you're going to have market rent. So there's a, there's a benefit and there's a negative for the renter that's in that section and averaging companies. Every deal is going to look different as we've kind of gone through this and it really base, it's based on the variables that you're trying to, to reconcile, you know. Is the primary variable going to be increasing the affordability percentage? That may be it. You know, another variable is the type of units that you want to put in, trying to be a driving variable. That may be it. And there will be times where those two variables conflict with each other. So if you want to put in three to four bedrooms, it's going to be harder to maximize the percentage of affordability because the expense associated with building a three or four bedroom in terms of the amount of real estate that you're using because for every one, four-bedroom unit, you could get definitely two, two bedrooms or depending on the space, you may be able to get two, two bedrooms and a one bedroom. So every average income deal is going to be different, which is this really most significant deviation in terms of how you look at this. Because it's hard to say, well, we're just going to do this. Because the structure of every deal is going to tell you whether it's good or bad and it's going to be dependent on a number of factors, which is based on the timing of getting into the li-tech applications. That's work that we have to do with you all. So I wanted to kind of jump in and cover that because that's going to help you all frame your decision on this.
So tapping onto that and the reason why we're coming today with Atwood as more of a concept. The, you can, the income averaging really does mean that you still, your, your final affordability for the property as a whole still has to be sixty percent AMI or below between when you average out all of the, the units. And so yes, the point is, yes, if you, there's a trade-off. Let's buffer with these eighty percent units, for example, to get those lower AMI units. So in theory, you're supposed to be able to get deeper affordability in certain units, but not have them fail the project. And that's the reason why they don't, most projects under a traditional li-tech don't have as many thirty percent units because they just don't, they don't support the finances. So the reason this is coming to Atwood, Atwood is a proposed income averaging project. Hoover is looking at that as well. But our property tax exemption policy that we just updated in February, our calculation for our fee structure and the exemption that the project qualifies says all of your units at sixty percent or below. We wrote it that way because the state statute requires the, the tax exemption to be proportional to the number of units or the, the percentage of the property available to low-income people. It does not define low income. It leaves it broad. So we've been researching across other housing authorities. Some have had to, to figure this out and some haven't yet. Everyone so far is going to allow the property tax exemption to apply to a full development up to eighty percent if it's an income averaging li-tech project. So again, the difference is we have qualified the full tax exemption for a property that's all sixty percent below. So now we have projects that are qualifying for li-tech. They're meeting, you know, the CHAFA requirements for affordability. CHAFA also values having mixed-income communities and deconcentrating poverty, which this does. And so we just need to look at our policies and decide at some point coming forward, we'll bring it back to you, whether we modify our calculation to, to make an every unit tax exempt up to eighty percent or not. So that's why for Atwood, we're coming forward with a concept now. Let us propose, still researching, still discussing what this could do. And then we would bring back a property tax exemption policy update for you to consider, at which time these income averaging projects would then set in stone what their partnership looks like.
Hmm.
Any other questions?
So I mean, I've heard you correctly or interpreted you correctly. You said that the tax exemption policy does not define low, low income?
The state statute does.
The state statute. What happens if you qualify under CHAFA, under li-tech, and then a state with your project? Does it recognize it as a, as a low income since they didn't comply?
So the statute, yeah.
That is specifically speaking to the Housing Authority law. So it is in the context of housing authorities. And so in the context of the exemption that we can give, like I was talking about through the entity, that doesn't define what low income is. The Housing Authority law and particularly that statute doesn't. Li-tech, CHAFA, IRS, as all of you said, these qualify for the li-tech credits.
Okay.
But our policy says sixty percent.
Okay.
Validates.
Because that's what we, we read low income, that's, you know, Longmont has used sixty percent for li-tech in the past. We use fifty percent for the city programs. And we were basically just, we were making it. That's how you determine the proportion in our calculations. So that's how we were writing it. And then income averaging came in.
Yeah. And, and at the risk of making it more complicated when you're looking at whether wanting to, when they have, when they're looking at income averaging action. So A, part of it is maximize the number of units, let's say fifty percent AMI to get more, put something here. Kind of teeing the conversation, we'll probably go more in-depth in the development update, is then in order to get financed, you have to do a market study. And basically what the market study is telling you in, in the financing world is what is the likelihood that you can lease up all your units at certain AMI levels? And if you remember during Chrisman when we talked about CHAFA stating that, I think it was CHAFA that stated that we're pretty saturated at sixty percent AMI. We're seeing that in the market sense. And so they then have to, in order to make the project financeable, you have to really try to target where you're putting in the units where you have the lowest sort of inverse in the, sort of, from home to capture rates. So the lower the capture rate, the more likely it is to be leased. And so what we're seeing misses for some form of record. So on Hoover, what we're seeing is the capture rates are below five percent for thirties, seventies, eighties, which means the likelihood that you're going to lease those to bring out are nearly zero for seventy to eighty because there are no seventy to eighties that we're seeing in the community.
Li-tech.
Li-tech in Longmont. And then the capture rate at fifty percent AMI is thirty percent. So to give you a sense of the difference, you have, you're reducing your rent ability, the, the ability to rent the units at fifty because, you know, it's a good twenty-five points higher than the others. Sixty percent AMI capture rate is almost thirty-five percent. And so they're having to manage that in terms of making the project pass the financing test that the lenders bring into play. So you can start seeing where income averaging is becoming more of a discussion point in, in the li-tech world because, you know, especially here is that if you see saturation here, then you're going to have to move here in order to make, make it more palatable or, you know, to the lenders as they're trying to, to figure out the lending costs. So that's another piece to this puzzle that, as I stated earlier in the pre-session, is something that's making us reevaluate, ask some additional questions on our housing needs analysis because we're seeing some things that aren't quite lining up. So the market study is incredibly important to all of this. And I know it's, you know, you're probably going, what are you all telling us? Because it took us a while to start bringing these pieces in the puzzle together. But you can see that, you can see why they're trying to use this, what the market study is doing, and it's really taking this, this way and, and, and really moving out of that fifteen to sixty percent, or really more sixty percent AMI, as you say.
Right. Basically, we're saturated at fifty and sixties and we may not lease some very quickly, which is not good for cash flow. Our markets show that we, we knew that we needed, you know, forty percent and below. We've seen that in studies for several years. We need those and they will rent up quick because they're such a need. We're also seeing that this, since income averaging is so new, there are no income restricted seventy and eighty percent units, which again, the benefit of that is amongst many things, you're not subject to rent increases that are unpredictable. It's very much more stable housing. So.
And, and if I can add to this, I remember, I think it was a year or so ago, maybe prior to Councilman or Commissioner McCoy joining us. As we were talking through affordability, I think we looked up and said, it wouldn't surprise us in a few years if on the housing ownership side, we look up and go eighty to a hundred percent is shifting into that capital A on ownership. We said, it wouldn't surprise us that that's going to occur in the rental market too. That's what we have to start digging into because we think, and I'm going to preface this by saying we think that a lot of our seventy to eighty, our sixty to eighty inventory in our community are probably older units. And all the newer units that are coming on are sliding out of that range and the lower rents are higher. And so we're going back on the housing needs analysis to say, carve this up for us. Show us what it looks like in new units. Show us what it looks like in new units and show us what it looks like in our historical inventory. Because if we find that that's in fact what's occurring on the new units, that's just the canary in the coal mine to tell us that the rental margin is now going to be significant in that sixty to eighty because there's no units coming in to fill that. So those are the additional questions that are actually coming out of what we're learning in the market study that's now starting to inform a broader conversation.
And to add on to that, we still want to see what our, like, average rents are in the city because that's the people, that's what people have. They're not going to go to new or old, they're going to go to what they can afford. So that's the people, so we want to see that. But when, when that is including both old and new stock, all we can, we can affect change on new stock from here on with policy and what we choose to do. But we don't have control over existing stock. And so we need to know that differentiation to guide policy.
So, our question again. When you say that you think it's going to go to the sixty to eighty percent, um, will that be defined through HUD as the next market for low, lower income? Because my understanding, well, to your question that the market is saturated, you think in the sixty percent AMI, can you, because of what you got your tax exemptions for, your CHAFA, everything that you got funding for, can you reduce that and house forty percent AMI? And does that change your affordability to run your, I, I'm confused.
I think, I think they, I think they're right. So HUD sets, HUD calls eighty percent AMI low income.
Oh, they do?
They do. Um, for most places separate that between for sale and rental market. In our area, well, at least in the state of Colorado, sixty percent in AMI below is traditionally what rental, rental, um, tax credit projects were capped at. And then really, like, for our programs, our down payment assistance goes up to eighty. So we've been looking at this sixty to eighty range as like a for sale market, even though that is changing. And sixty and below is rental. And then further in Longmont, because our prior housing data showed us that sixty was saturated. For the inclusionary housing programs, council chose to set it at fifty and below because we knew fifty and below is where we actually need the units. We don't need them in sixty.
Okay.
And CHAFA is now sliding to eighty percent.
Oh, they, that was, that was.
So the state, the state is now moving there.
Okay.
Which, we still have a lot of work to do on this, but I wanted to tie all of these pieces together because it's hard to look at this if you just go, well, what about this question? But it's related to income averaging, it's related, uh, market studies. You know, once we can dig into it, as, as a policy perspective, we may have to come back and reexamine fifty percent number because we may see something else occurring on, on that, for lack of a better word, that attainment piece. And, but we, we've got to dig into that.
So does CHAFA keep up with HUD because, um, okay, that's all we're going to. Can we fund that at that level?
We can for certain programs, yeah.
Okay. Yes.
Is Brickwell a subsidiary, another company?
Brickwell is a development company. Then they created, this LLC is their subsidiary for this project. But overall, Brickwell is the developer, the LITC developer of the project.
You said this is a long time Longmont developer?
So there is a develop, long time Longmont developer that is now partnered with a LITC developer.
Brickwell is the?
Brickwell is the LITC.
Um, differentiate, second question, just differentiate capture rate from occupancy rate.
Capture rate is your ability, is basically the, the market that you have to build the units. Occupancy rate is, once you build the units, are they for? So it's more of what, what's your, I don't know if I'm saying this right. What's, what's the market that you have in your community to put people in the units? As you're looking at the future, occupancy is in the future and who's having people in there?
So it's put into addressable markets, excuse me. I was just offering.
Yeah. I was, um, I was going to, I have a second question. Sorry. I just went right on that again. So, all right. So, so that's what I was going to answer. Uh, what you just described sounds to be like a ratio of market potential to numbers of units. So could I use ratio as opposed to rate?
Um, I wouldn't say the market potential sounds right. It's, it's telling you if there's a market for this product versus occupancy is, how well are you managing that project and turning over and re, re-leasing it?
All right. So it's the, it's the number of potential residents or lease or lessors, DCs? DCs?
Lesses.
Lesses. In relationship to the number of units and whatever the price for units.
Yeah, that's what took me trying to, because it's the vernacular that they use is different.
Is there any other discussion or question? Can I have a motion into twenty twenty-three dash twenty-one?
How about, um, resolution twenty twenty-three dash twenty-one?
Second. P seven.
Can we also give direction to bring back the average income policy? Just, I have that in minutes.
Sure. I'll do that for you in, after doing this second. Okay, so the motion has been to approve twenty twenty-three dash twenty-one. It was made by Commissioner Hidakal Perry, seconded by Commissioner Rubries. Uh, all of us in favor?
Aye.
All of us opposed. So that period's unanimous then. So we want to move to give direction to, uh, LHA staff to bring back the property.
I would have, tell me all move that we direct staff to bring back the income averaging policy.
Property tax exemption policy.
Second.
To consider income.
Is the, is the property tax exemption policy to consider income averaged?
Okay. Okay. So, um.
I'm second.
Yeah.
I'm second.
All right. Ask that question, is, is this, uh, for discussion by the commission? So will it, as soon as we can discuss, discuss it or something from now?
We would, we could bring back red lines based on research that we continue to do and then bring that back next month.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, yeah. I just wanted to get like a timeline because it sounds like you're going to have to be facing this pretty soon.
Yeah, yeah, it was in front of us, so, you know, we hope to have something to speak about by the eighteen.
Okay.
Unless there's an outlier that we come across that doesn't make sense, a little later.
Okay. So the motion is good. All of us in favor?
Aye.
All of us opposed. And that passes unanimously. Very interesting. Um, a lot of work. There's a lot of work. So now we're at, uh, the interim executive director is Reeve Carr, Harold Development Department?
Oh, no.
Whatever. Yeah. Whatever you want to do. Are we going to do the, uh, development updates first?
Sure. So I'll, I'll start on those.
All right.
Um, so our, first, our big news, Zinnia is closed, which you, you heard that by now. But May twenty-fifth, um, we did close on Zinnia. Construction is in full force. We were out there this morning and they are hauling a lot of old, um, asphalt and doing a lot of grading right now. So, um, that construction is anticipated to be fifteen months, which means we would have lease up next fall, fall twenty twenty-four. Um, and so we're still, we're still finalizing all of the paperwork associated with closing, but, um, we're also moving into that construction phase. We're working to make sure residents are aware of what's going on, address safety issues on site since, you know, we do have a whole building of people living right there next door. Um, so we're moving into new phase here. Um, next we'll be preparing with all of the parties involved to plan our lease up process and, um, nailing down our, the more specifics on what we're going to do on our property management plan. Um, so just to, to recap on the property management plan that is, and this is the first time that LHA has entered into an agreement to be a third party property manager. So, um, it's different than the rest of our LHA properties. And so that was its own agreement that we negotiated and we really, uh, took that one very, um, seriously to make sure we could rely on that going forward and try to anticipate as much as we could that it's way down the road.
So why is it different? Why is this project different than the other projects? It is different because, um, I can't remember if it was part of council. I think again, everyone with council member McFoy. If you, if you remember when Fall River was being constructed and they had a gap that they needed to fill in the balance sheets of seven hundred and fifty thousand, the city actually stepped in with the Affordable Housing Fund and purchased the properties surrounding the streets to allow Fall River to go under construction. And so the way that deal was created, and it's created many, many issues, is that was prior to the city sitting in the role of the housing authority. So the way that was structured was we were agnostic in, in essence of how it was going to be built. And in many ways, based on, I think, what we were seeing at the time felt that a different group may be more ready to do it based on all the challenges that the housing authority was dealing with. So that was this contract that's sit over here. Based on how that was agreed upon with Element, the way that the housing authority, now that we're doing both, that we brought the housing authority into this was for the operations of the facility, economies of scale in that world, but then also the special limited partnerships. So that's a big reason why this one's different and more like Atwood because of the way that that original contract was established in Element long before we took over the housing authority. So I wanted to clarify that.
Thank you.
Okay. Um, next I wanted to give an update on how we're doing with Hoover. So we are gearing up for that tax credit submittal, August first, um, the application. Uh, we have, we just got that market study Friday. That's what has been part of this, uh, discussion over the last few days. Um, so it's very encouraging. Our market study looks great. Um, and then we also got word on all the other developments across the state. They're submitting for tax credits at the same time as Hoover. Atwood was one, so those two will be, um, in the same bucket being considered. And then, um, generally it seems like there is more applications than average, but not by a long shot. So there's more competition than average. But, um, they do think that there are certain aspects of this project that are not being hit with others. And so they're hopeful, but there's still about three and a half applications to every one possible award. So, and that's not too far off of normal. Um, and that's why sometimes it is common to go back for a second time if you're not successful in first. Um, other than that, we're in full concept design. We're getting some really great visuals of what the property might look like. And we're on, on July eighteenth in our next meeting here, we'll bring some of those visuals and we'll, there's going to be several Hoover items coming to that day to prepare for that tax credit application. Um, then if there's any questions on Hoover, I'll pause.
So Hoover on income averaging is, is going to look different than, as we're looking at, will look different than Atwood because remember Atwood's one and two bedroom units. Hoover's one, two, three, four bedroom units. So to the point that I made earlier, that variable starts shifting how you look at affordability because, you know, there's, well, then it's likely in that conversation that we're going to have to weigh those two variables against each other in terms of three and four bedroom units versus percentage of affordability because it just takes up more space. And that's, that's what starts adjusting without entry.
Um, just out of curiosity, is the, um, child care center out?
It is in at the moment. Um, we are seeking gap funding. We've got a meeting set up with people all over the state. It feels like in the next couple of weeks to talk about, um, gap funding opportunities.
So it was out?
Yeah, I know.
And then it went back in because we were, they, um, Shannon has made aware of some foundations and others that are interested in it.
Right.
This project, for the reason that the foundations are interested in it is because it's unique in that there's not many housing projects in the U. that are family and looking at this, you know. So a lot of them will do early childhood, some will do housing, you know, but we've got both, so that's intriguing to them. We also think that makes a tax credit application more viable. Now, all that being said, August one is the deadline to apply. So we're going to go to another iteration of, because you have to have all of your capital stacked in that application. Or maybe another iteration where for some reason the foundations can't move fast enough. We may have to pull it out, but hold it because I think we can put it back in.
We could, well, we, we're sorting that out. But we could hold it as a, as a block and then say that it's self-funded and then back fund after the fact. But there's nuances to that.
Yeah.
Okay, thanks. Um, and then the last key update I wanted to give on is on the potential sale of the building at six fifteen minutes. So this is the building that's not currently leased by the Center for People with Disabilities. We've been negotiating with them, um, about the purchase of that property. They're very interested. Um, and in July, and again, in July's meeting, it's going to be pretty busy. Um, we're going to be, we're finalizing right now a draft purchase and sale agreement for your consideration and then an MOU for services that they can provide the LHA as part of our negotiation on the, the sale of that property. So that is all, um, working fervently right now.
Six fifty, I think?
Mm-hmm. It's right next to Village Place.
So to, to your goal, you all said for us six properties, I think within five years, um, we're directly involved with three that you were about, and Chrisman, and Zinnia, and Hoover. Uh, we've now connected to four that in fact can go, um, again, facilitating those units. So there's four right there. Uh, and then, um, we, we're bringing the property issue with rural, rural mobile homes to be for affordable housing. That's coming into play. We're probably going to hold a little bit on that because we think there's value in the first main transition and transitory and development and trying to figure out how that works. So, um, I think we're, we're, we have pretty good progress on the goal of six. And hopefully we'll get the next two built soon.
Twenty-five years.
I'm going to go a second.
Uh, we started, we set that goal in, in mid twenty twenty-two. One year ago, July.
Amazing what you've done. Yeah, so she was talking about Longmont. Who else got the thread about the lawsuit?
What lawsuit?
Um. I can't remember. I mean, she's high, um, and there's a, there's contact with the housing authority in Longmont. And the otherwise, um, referred to, um, sue, um, individual officials.
I don't know that. And that's, yeah, and that's not housing authority, that's actually the city that owns it. And so the Stormwater Fund owns it now and then Affordable Housing Fund is going to purchase it from the Stormwater Fund. So, yeah, no, nobody's contacted us on any of that.
Well, there, there were many things about this, this location, what, that are, being informed about several aspects of, of the deal. Their, their goal apparently is, is to slowly work back, develop, and, and push.
I heard that. Yeah, same, yeah.
So the, the plan for oil was outlined in a city council informational item that came to you on June sixth on the council side. Um, so basically the plan is to land base at this point so that you can have a nice, you know, a rolling set of developments and to make those calls about how it plays into first amendment and allow the time for that to settle.
Yeah, one of the things that you will probably see both as the housing authority and potentially as the city council, so we're, we're maxed stat wise. And, uh, where we're, where we're looking at all the development work. And so we, we were, we're evaluating how we can bring on some additional development positions. And, um, what we've realized based on the money we're putting into the affordable housing. And, um, what we've realized based on the money we're putting into the Affordable Housing Fund and the fee in lieu that's coming in, we actually have enough money to to support that, but the financial policy doesn't allow us to do that. And so like, it's going to toggle both sides of the equation is because, um, the benefit is to the housing authority and the development staff to help get these projects moving and capacity potentially to go more maybe down the road. But it's connected to this other side. And so I've asked Molly to work with Teresa and budget in terms of what we can do, what finances are available so that we can potentially create that position now and in connection with the Affordable Housing Fund and then move it forward in the future, um, because they're they're maxed. We can't take anymore, uh, based on our workload. So we're evaluating now for people on pretty quick.
The, Tom, there's your question about how we do it on the development and reference to retreat in time. Too, I carry on Jake goes and Jack is everywhere I go during that portfolio. And I keep thinking, one of these days, uh, we're going to return to these and take stock of where we are, what progress we've made, what have we learned, what needs to be refreshed, that there are some of the objectives, some of the outcomes, the dates have already passed, right? So in some ways it's out of date, but it would, and maybe I'm the only one that cares about this and I just couldn't say Molly didn't get an update. Um, I'm not suggesting a retreat, something I'm not trying to add in the workload, but but it, um, it would be helpful to me if somebody took that and you could turn it into a landscape document and say, here's what we said we'd do, here's what we've done. It's no longer applies, it does apply, here's what we, something to keep this current. Otherwise it's, we spend a day, came up with pretty good stuff and we never looked at it. Now you look at it all the time, I'm sure. We haven't.
We we did go over an annual report in January showing the progress that we made in twenty twenty two and what the focus for twenty twenty three would be.
Well, I'm timing it.
I think it was actually.
Oh, well. So I can provide that.
Yeah.
And then, I mean, already things are happening so quickly that that's six, we're six months out from that. Um, it's, I already have updates to provide.
I'll, I'll, if there was a, I'll go back and watch the recording of the meeting. January. Move along, come on.
I only remember because I think we were coming back and we knew you were going to be gone and we were presenting that that particular. He was on the thirty first.
Did you choose that day?
No, no, it was, it was, I think he, it was.
I I was out of town for a week the last week of January in.
It's in there. January the first.
I was gone in January. Where are you looking?
Um, it was under, uh, long up the view. Yeah, front of.
Send me a line, just send me a line.
So Molly, that's it? Great update back there. Um, yeah.
So as you can see, um, we have raised occupancy up to ninety five percent, um, one of the highest since I've been here. Um, I think a lot of this is due to how we did change our waitlist procedures about a month and a half ago. We have Diana, our admin assistant managing all the waitlist. She's calling as soon as we get a notice or trying to previous these units. Um, going through the current statuses, I'm actually going to do an update more today and not even as when I did this report. So Aspeno's neighborhood, we, uh, now have five vacant. Um, one's been down for meth and we're going to probably have two more down for meth. Um, and two others are pending rentals. Aspeno senior says that we had six vacants. Um, we do have six vacant, but five of those are now rented as of this morning and just one, um, not leased. Fall River has just the one unit down for meth, but that's already pre-rented and that should be back online on June fifteenth, so they will be a hundred percent occupied by the end of the month. Carson and Lodge, um, she has pending applications for both those units. Her main focus is getting ready for a re-AC inspection with HUD tomorrow. So HUD will be out there doing the physical, going through all the cabinets, closets, everything and anything. We're probably about six to eight hours. Um, the suites, we have just four vacants and three of those are down units. Um, the one other, one rentable unit is already rented, it's an LHA unit. So once that's rented, all of our available units are filled. It will be the highest occupancy the suites have had in three plus years. Um, Spring Creek has no vacancies at this moment, and then the Briarwood and Village Place we currently are not leasing at due to pending sales. Any questions on the occupancy?
What, just out of curiosity, what is making the occupancy go up? Is we have more units available? Are people actually?
We've changed our procedures in house because we did have some stagnant waitlists that we were working off.
That's right.
So we did open up, all the waitlists are now open. We're not closing them. So that if one, for Aspen Senior, for example, we called fifty five people trying to get a rental and not one person took. So we're just leaving those waitlists open. So if somebody walks in and they're on the waitlist and they have a voucher or they move next week, we're trying to get them processed and in a unit.
And it's not specific to a, uh, development, like if they wanted to live in Spring Creek, for example, that's no vacancies there, so will you, you allow them to go somewhere else?
They can apply for whatever properties they want. So we have a waitlist for each property currently. So, because each property has different AMIs, different features, different layouts. So some don't want to be on the west side more, some wants the east side, some want, you know. So they need to choose where they're at. We have, I'd say probably half of our waitlist are on every waitlist, applicants, so.
Okay.
Kind of get the first available.
That's what I wanted to know.
Yeah, so they can get the first available.
All right, thanks. So property updates. Two, two, that's me.
I'm very short this month. Um, we still group moving from the city to the my events, but Susan Spalding and the mediation team have been out doing our coffee and conversations and it's been great, amazing resident feedback after these meetings. Just, they're learning a lot. We're doing fair housing with the residents, but we're letting Susan teach it and she's kind of going through reasonable complications at the same time of what property management has to deal with, why we do what we do, why we say what we have to do with, deal with and how we do with it. And she gives the laws and the situations going all the way back to Markham, it's a key in civil rights on some of these fair housing things. So it's making the residents understand where management comes from when we say, no, we can't do that or no, we have to treat you like we treat your neighbor. And it's kind of eye opening for the residents and we've gotten a lot of great feedback from those. And those are continuing this week at two more properties. Um, everything else I think I've basically gone over with. Um, the only biggest thing happening at our property is Village Place. They're very upset that we took away their, uh, their assigned parking. They got a one-year warning, but this is all leading up to recent indication. Um, because we need to have spots available, move people around, spots for construction dumpsters here and there, surveying, you name it, but we just wanted to have flexible preferences.
And make it consistent with the rest of the property.
Well, and if you all remember, that was a property where previously probably Omenown Superstore at the time, um, it was pretty ups, the the property manager was assigning parking spots and, but also assigning ADA parking spots, which you're not allowed to do in ADA law. And so, you know, we had a bit of an upheaval when we started it. We said, okay, to a point we're going to give you a year, but we still have to do it. We're now transitioning into getting ready for the recent indication.
And probably some of those conversations with Susan Spalding has helped you.
Yes.
Let them understand the reasoning.
It actually was very beneficial at that property because she went through a reasonable accommodation and what qualifies for a reasonable accommodation where we can grant residents who need a closer parking spot an assigned parking spot, it just can't be an ADA. So we we have seen a few reasonable accommodations and we're treating them just like we do all the other properties that's under the same request.
Good. All right, we're done with property updates. Probably have some safety updates.
All right, so call for service has actually taken a dip, which is, that's real good, I hope.
Everybody's laughing.
Seems like a lot of our problem, um, you know, I wouldn't say folks, not necessarily problems, but a lot of them have resolved themselves, so that is good. Um, we will now, I know Molly fills us in last time when I was absent last month, but the ROI with, uh, MHP. So that document is completed, it's in MHP's hands and it actually had started from Andy Feaster, the sergeant of our core unit. So I've been working with him and have that document listing several, um, different entities for folks to sign off of for release of information from both hospitals to the school district to, um, public safety to LHA. And we did this for many reasons, um, but, and I'll give you one example. So we have, uh, we have a person that's having some significant issues, call for service are out, are crazy. Um, property management has some information, public safety has some information. MHP has a lot more information and really, you know, just us asking the question, um, do you know if this person's on their meds? We get the him and ha. So basically this document is, you know, it's, it's still optional and MHP will present it to each, each tenant and that'll be explained. And at the end of the day, it's to create a better situation for those people that get into this crisis. Um, so that's great. That that will be coming, it's done, it just needs to be presented basically to LHA staff. It's a pretty simple document.
So can I ask a question here? This is a paper document?
Correct.
Do you share information through a database so that you would know exactly where this person is and if you're on location or they?
So due to HIPAA, that that cannot be shared. So MHP would take that ROI and it would be, it would be verbal, um, yes or no this person. And and there are some specificities to the document, meaning that if this person doesn't want to discuss, maybe they don't want to discuss their medications. They're given the choice, but they're also talk, it's spoken to them really through MHP how valuable it is to discuss that. So again, all options are on the table, but at least it's on the table for them. And we don't struggle so much.
Good.
Um, and lastly, um, I know Harold had mentioned the P Alert, uh, meth detector. We've received that. We've, um, installed it in Village Place the last twenty four hours, got some readings there. Really, um, we're trying to figure out some, a few inconsistencies with it, but now it's in Harold's office on a glass shelf and, um, we're hoping it basically levels out to some normalcy, so we have basically a place to start.
And so just to recap, we're put that in a unit that we know is positive and vacant. Um, and so we're testing because we have our recycle regular math test process and then we have this vacant. So it's not in a, it's not in an occupied unit.
No. And it's, it replaced, the decision was made to place it in a where where we already knew the numbers. Um, so still working through the data on that.
To see if it registered the same numbers you can.
Correct. Yet it did not. Right, that's to be determined.
We're still trying to determine that. It's bugged.
Good.
Yeah.
So we've got the, we've got the feed through the software system.
So we've been looking at it and so we saw it do what it was supposed to do. It bugged. One of the things, we really need twenty four hours based on talking to them to see what it does because there's still residue that may interfere and so they wanted a longer period of time. So it did what we thought it was going to do originally and then it just did something that I'm sitting there going, I don't know what it did. So, you know, somebody's going over the office, so we know. But so we're going to be watching this over the next twenty four hours and probably move it around the building so we can just kind of get a sense of what baseline is.
Make sure that everybody's clean. When there's a reason it's bugging. Oh, okay, thank you.
That is, unless anyone has any questions.
Do you have any questions this time? I'm living with OKC's, not the doctors. I shouldn't really expect this time. So can we share comments?
Not this one.
Just maybe a question about the, this, the question about the form and meds and information being shared and HIPAA and all the issues around HIPAA. The Dixon Dixon project, was it, was it attempted to address that variation?
Yeah, so Christina and.
Carrying community.
Carrying community. Christina and Alberto are, um, we're at the next phase and what we want to do is actually beta test that communication system with the housing authority. Um, again, the, the piece that Sarah talked about in the ROI, you know, there will be a different version of that. So Christina and Alberto are having this conversation.
But it's still active.
And we just got to go, is it ready to roll so we can start trying it out? Because that could actually be a really good communication tool because it can firewall it. So if it's a medical issue and they allow, let's say, paramedics to have it, we can firewall it off of police or they allow police and paramedics but not us. So they're still moving on that and then they were talking about it yesterday. And so hopefully soon we can beta test that, but that's what we're pushing for.
Anyone else? I don't see anyone else, so I can ask you to jump.
So move.